Good evening, this is a meeting of the Franklin School Board. The meeting's being held at the Franklin High School cafeteria on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the school board did have a non-public session at five-thirty this evening. Uh, this will be our public session now at six-twelve. If we could stand for the salute of the flag, please, if it's right to your time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just so everybody's aware, we do have a member that is on Zoom this evening. She is homesick, unable to make it, but she has wanted to come on to the meeting so that is allowed under our policies that she can Zoom in for this meeting. Uh, because we do have a member on Zoom, we are required to take any votes, um, through a roll call vote this evening. So any votes that the board has to take has to be done at roll call. All right, uh, Colleen, was the meetings posted? That is required.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Agenda item four is our public participation. During our public participation, I just ask you, you try to keep your comments to a minimum of three minutes. I give no more than thirty minutes to this session of the meeting. I just ask that you state your name and what would you represent when you were addressing the school board? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the school board this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Um, just so the public is aware, I do hold a second public participation at the end of the evening in case anybody would like to, at, uh, that later time, address the school board, they may do so, and that is under agenda item twelve this evening. I'll go to agenda item five, which is our recognitions. Do we have any recognitions to be brought forward before the board this evening?
I would like to recognize the high school for the, uh, program that was, we had the other night, um, for...
Yeah, excellence in education.
Education. Excellence in education. Um, I thought the students did a wonderful job. It was very moving. Um, it was great to see the interaction between the staff member that the student had chosen and why, um, they had chosen that individual. And it was just, um, it was moving and I really enjoyed being part of that.
Thank you, Deb.
Jack? I just want to commend, um, I guess the administration who orchestrated all of the class day parade, um, that took place. I thought it was a fantastic, uh, experience for, for all and for the community. So, thank you for, for doing that and getting that organized. Uh, I thought it was a good event. And while we were there, I was talking to Lori about, um, the flag that we had outside and, um, it looked a little distressed and, and tired and, um, she had made some inquiries. And Steve Donahue had stepped up to get us a new flag for our flagpole here at the high school. Um, so I want to, uh, at least, uh, acknowledge Mr. Donahue for getting that flag for us as well.
I'm staying on the class day parade. I think it's important, um, that we recognize Kathy Fuller from the community who did a tremendous amount of work to organize, um, this class day parade. She was one of the leaders in our, uh, committee, class day parade committee. Uh, but she went, uh, very much above and beyond, um, to organize everything. So I'd also like to recognize Kathy Fuller from our community, uh, for the class day parade. The other thing I'd like to recognize is, um, on Friday evening, we had the high school graduation. Um, unfortunately, we couldn't have the traditional outside at the high school due to some weather concerns of some thunderstorms. So we headed at the middle school. Uh, we had about three hundred people attend the graduation at the middle school. It went over very well. Um, it was very well attended. Uh, there was a lot of positive, um, feedback from the community members that showed up at the, uh, graduation. Uh, we had no issues at all. Um, everybody was able to arrive at the graduation prior to its starting. So everything went well and I just want to congratulate all those who put that, uh, time forward to get the graduation set up at the high school and to also recognize our seniors who graduated.
I just want to recognize everybody that was involved in the production of Six.
Yes.
Including, uh, student representative Zoe. It, I don't know if people were aware that, are aware that that was a project block production from our first year of implementation of project blocks. Uh, and I couldn't have not have been a better representation of what we were hoping for. Um, when we created the new schedule, when we created project-based learning, uh, in our first year here at the high school. And I have to remind people, we're only in our first year. But we couldn't have asked for a better, a better outcome. Uh, and I know a lot of people were involved in that. You know, Jewel was involved in that. Carissa, thank you for all the work you've been doing in terms of getting us to this point. Zoe, you were fantastic, you and everybody else that was on stage. But I just, I mean, we are just doing some really great stuff and I, I just hope people really recognize that that came right out of class day classes and working with teachers. And I just think people need to know that and be aware of that. And I just hope we can even do more things like that next year. Just to show that we're headed in the right direction. So thank you guys for all of that hard work.
Is there a place that these are videotaped where someone could purchase it to watch it?
Unfortunately, the show is licensed, so we can't do that. The projects that the students made, the trifolds, are actually right in my office. Um, we took a lot of pictures. So the costumes that were designed by the senior student, those were originals. So we have photos of the costume designs. We have photos of the students performing. We have some short video clips that we took of them performing, but we can't videotape the whole thing because that's a copyright issue, unfortunately.
Now, are there any other recognitions this evening? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Move on to agenda item six, which is our high school student representative report. Uh, this will be Zoe's last one until we see her back in the fall. So Zoe, I'll turn it over to you.
Starting off, as was just stated, on June sixth and seventh, the FHS players put on their final performance of the school year, Six, the musical, which is a modern retelling of the lives of Henry VIII's six wives, presented in the form of a pop concert. Collaborative projects created by the students involved in the show were displayed during performances, showing that not only is our school's theater program extremely talented, but also intellectually gifted, which I think is important. Last Wednesday, during the underclassman awards ceremony and senior class night, students of all grades in the high school received rewards recognizing their educational achievements over the past year. Additionally, during scholarship night, thousands of dollars' worth of scholarships were awarded to this year's graduating class. And finally, as mentioned previously, everybody took the things I was going to talk about tonight. Um, graduation was held last Friday in the Franklin Middle School Gymnasium. A huge congratulation is owed to this year's graduates for overcoming a seemingly endless series of challenges leading up to graduation. This includes having a different schedule every year and having to learn remotely during, during the COVID pandemic their freshman year, on top of all the struggles a high school student would have faced anyways. And that's it.
Any questions for Zoe? You are coming back to us next year, right, Zoe?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Zoe. Have a good summer, too. All right, agenda item seven is the approval of our prior board minutes. We'll start out with the approval of our public minutes first of May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. So I'll take a motion on that. So moved by Leanne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Deb. Is there any discussion on the public, uh, meeting minutes of May twentieth? All right, seeing none, I need a roll call vote, please, to accept them.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass? Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Byfield?
Yes.
Jackson?
Oops, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do the, uh, we need a motion to accept, uh, on the non-public meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Any motion on that and any other motion to follow with it?
I make a motion to approve and continue to seal minutes of May, non-public session for May twentieth.
Motion's been made to seal the non-public, uh, of, uh, of May twentieth, approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we need a roll call vote on that, please.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Cody?
Epstein.
Patrick. Uh, Marie Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Byfield?
Yes.
And Jackson.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. The non-public, uh, minutes of May twentieth are approved and sealed. That'll prove that would, that'd be agenda item seven done. Agenda item eight, committee reports. So I'll start with Deb as I normally with their committee report. And you got just finance or, Joey, finance, too?
Just.
Just finance?
Just finance.
Just finance, okay.
We had a meeting on June twelfth. Uh, we approved the minutes of May ninth. We reviewed bank reconciliation, reconciliations, treasurer's report and the financials. We talked about the bus contract, um, capital improvement planning. We reviewed, um, uh, the single audit engagement letter, which you'll find in your packet tonight. And we talked about the proposed position that Dan will speak about, uh, later with family, school attendance liaison, um, and to start, uh, looking at capital improvement planning, uh, further out than our current plan. Under the bus contract that we had talked about is we want to bring up a discussion, uh, with the board regarding, um, electric buses and, uh, the elimination of one, uh, bus due to the, um, the finances. Um, and Dan will touch base more in his report on that. Our next meeting is August, I'll look my page. August seventh at four o'clock.
There you are.
Four o'clock.
Thank you, Deb. Is there any questions for Deb on her finance report? All right, uh, Delaney, you have I two?
Uh, we have not had an I two meeting since our last full board meeting. Our next I two meeting is tomorrow night at five o'clock at the S U offices.
I know Liz, we had, or, yeah, we do have a policy meeting?
We did have a policy meeting. Uh, policy committee met on June eleventh at five P M., during which we, uh, finalized the proposed revisions to policy I J O A. And that is in the folder for first read tonight. And we also started going through the legislative updates, annual legislative updates. We, um, prioritized the priority slash required by law category. And we made it through all of those policies, so those could go in for first read as well. And at our next meeting, which is on August thirteenth at four-thirty, we're going to do, to finish up the legislative updates.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Any questions for Liz? As you can see, we have, um, some first reads to do and a couple of second reads for tonight.
I'll just comment that Jewel did a wonderful job, I heard, at that meeting.
Jewel did an amazing job, both drafting and in speaking to all of the policies at the meeting. Ten out of ten.
You guys nailed it.
Are there any questions for Liz? And were there any other committees that met that have reports? Go ahead, Jack.
I wasn't at the last meeting, unfortunately, so I have an update for the safety committee meeting that took place on the seventh of May. Um, we get together, we discussed truancy policy. Uh, we discussed truancy language in the handbooks that are going to be, uh, looked at this summer. Talked about attendance coordinator truancy grant, uh, that we would possibly be pursuing, um, as well as F M S, uh, discipline data. Uh, and our next meeting is going to be on the fourteenth of August at five o'clock.
Any questions for Jack?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You said you were going to be talking about attendance and truancy and those things. The policy that's being finalized, had, has your committee had input into that yet? This policy that's being reviewed in second read?
No, but we're going to be discussing the language in the handbook that would, this, that would mention that policy.
Okay. So if there's, this could possibly come back again, um, for a read, a first read, a second read, if your committee has some updates that needs to be made along with the handbook?
If there was... Yeah, I'm not speaking for the, the committee, uh, as a whole, but, um, as chair, we would look to that, have that policy as our guiding, um, direction for the language in the handbooks.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to have to be done again.
Yes. Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think the, if I...
Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
I think the idea, what's that?
Go ahead. Yep.
Um, the idea is that, so I'm on the safety committee as well, um, and I'm the chair of the policy committee. Uh, the idea was to make sure that, to revisit that language and make sure that the policy was solid and kind of work off of that. But like Jack said, if anything does come up, I can make note of that very easily. Uh, but I, I think it will be more of a handbook than a more changes to the policy.
All right, any other questions? All right, uh, Carissa, you have any updates you want to give on the portrait or project base or anything?
We submitted, um, our proposal for next year, um, got our feedback and that's due on the twenty-eighth. So it's in really good shape, even though there looks like a lot of feedback, that's how it goes. So that's good, very, very clear direction of what they want. Um, we did get accepted to present at Aurora Institute in November in New Orleans. So we'll be coming back with a proposal for how many students we'll bring. And we'll need parent chaperones as well, so we'll be coming back probably in August, um, with that to you. That's all I got.
Are there any other policy, uh, or committee reports, excuse me, committee reports to be brought forward? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Agenda item nine is new business, so we'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. So I want to thank the board members, uh, for, uh, taking the email vote on the senior class trip that I found out about last minute. Uh, we'll make sure that doesn't happen again, but thank you to everyone for, 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 for taking care of that for us. Uh, we should take a vote on that tonight, uh, just to, um, I don't remember what the word is, but...
Ratify.
Ratify, solidify. So if we could take a vote on that and make it official for the, for the record, and then I'll make sure the email vote, uh, goes with the minutes tonight as well, so Colleen has all that.
I'll make a motion to ratify the senior class trip, um, email vote by the board for camping trip, um, that took place June eighth through the tenth, that camped in New Hampshire.
Okay, so motion to debate to, uh, ratify the senior class trip. That was done through an email with the school board. Do I have a second? Second by Marie. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass? Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Byfield?
Yes.
Jackson?
Epstein.
Motion passes unanimously for the senior class trip. And the email minutes will be included with the regular minutes. Okay. All right, tonight I have with us Daisy Blaisdell from the food pantry. She's been patiently waiting. Yeah, you can come on up, Daisy. So Daisy reached out to me a few weeks ago, um, looking to see if we could find some space in one of the schools to put the school program. As you guys know, uh, they've been running the school weekend, uh, meal program for a long time. And, um, Daisy's running out of space, uh, at her, her, uh, location, uh, which she actually took me to, which I can confirm she's definitely running out of space. So we actually looked at the middle school first and, uh, sorry, we looked at the ele, no, we looked at the high school first. That was the first tour that we took. And we really couldn't find, uh, a reasonable location, uh, that would make sense at the high school. But then I said, let's take a look at the middle school. So another day I looked at the middle school. So we have identified a, a classroom at the middle school, uh, with, with Jimmy's blessing as well, room sixty-three, which is on the bottom floor. It's right near an exterior entrance, which would work for them in terms of, uh, deliveries and whatnot. So Daisy's here, I'd like to talk about the possibility of, uh, the food pantry taking over one of our classrooms to move that program into the school. So I'll let Daisy talk about that first and then I have a few other things to say.
Basically, that we are out of space in our current location. We're serving over a hundred and fifty households a week. So the inventory coming in for that is, is significant. Um, we have since two thousand and eighteen been packing those supplemental weekend bags for kiddos in the Franklin and, and actually this past year in Andover schools as well. It, it's totally separate inventory. It's a separate group of volunteers. It's a separate driver to deliver them. It, it's all separate, but it's, it's, it's still under the auspices and, and the funding of the, of the food pantry. But it's a space in our current facility that if we could move that program elsewhere, it would allow us to, to accept some pallets of stuff that become available that, that otherwise we can't, can't deal with. We do have some storage on the third floor of our facility. But, you know, ta, and, and we do store quite a few things up, but getting that up and down is, is sort of an issue. So we were looking for an off-site space that we could store some excess inventory for the pantry if need be and also just operate the weekend bag packing out of that space. There would be no public access, you know, for, as food pantry, nobody's coming in there. It would be our volunteers that go in. We have a, a crew that'll go in and actually set up the tables for the, and then the packers come in and, and pack. That, that system, I think, was done because there's not room for somebody setting up and packing all in the same space. So it may be that, that the setting up doesn't have to happen, that the packers will, will do their own setup because there's enough room for that. But, but that we, the pantry will, will take care of any cost for fingerprinting or, or background checks on the volunteers that would be going into the space. We will take care of the cost for that. Um, we will be handling through our insurance company the coverage that we have for any of our inventory and stuff we have, uh, what, property insurance stuff, um, that would, would be in that space. So that part of it would be, would be taken care of as well. So it, it just would be really helpful, um, to be able to use that classroom for, for a few years. Um, if it's, well, for, if, if it's available, um, it would, it would make a significant difference in what we can do over in the other building as well.
So I, I did speak with Daisy about, um, fingerprinting and that everybody that was going to be onsite at any point would need to be fingerprinted for sure and go through that process, just like an employee would. Uh, and then we also talked about access to the building and how that would work. Um, there would be access for, um, certain leaders in the program. It would be, uh, the ones that would allow then the volunteers to come in. Uh, there is an access door, uh, that has key card access that we could set up, um, should the board approve having them move into the space. Or we could also have access where they still come through the front of the building and sign in, um, during the school day when kiddos are in session. So it would depend on what time of day they were coming in or whether it was on a weekend or whether it was in the evening. So we've had, we have some contingencies for all three of those types of scenarios in terms of how to access the building as well, so. Other than that, open up for questions.
Go ahead.
I... The food pantry is a wonderful asset to this community. So I commend the food pantry for all the work that you do within the community. And I, I appreciate you considering, uh, the volunteers and the need to be fingerprinted. I deal with school safety, so my background is preserving staff and students in the building. So if, if there would be access by, whether it be volunteers with a fingerprint or otherwise, I would prefer that there wouldn't be in there during the school day. That would be my, my, uh, my caveat. I thought it was going to be initially just a summer program. It would be the summer food and the building would be open anyway. We have to work around cleaning and stuff like that, but, um, we, uh, I don't know. I, I have a lot of questions about, uh, personnel and things like that, how that would all work out with our insurance and, and it just, I have too many questions, unfortunately. So, uh, if we, if we were to vote tonight, I, unfortunately, I wouldn't be in support unless I could get some more information.
The timing, the, right now, the, the setup takes about an hour and a half in our facility. Um, the packers come in, they're in and out in two hours, in two hours the following day. Um, and then a driver comes in, picks them up and takes them at another time. So that, you know, it's not like an all-day, every-day sort of thing. It's, it's a specific designated period of time. But I understand your concern about people being in there during school hours. What about after-school hours? Like four o'clock in the afternoon? Or, I mean, is it, is it a concern because it's school year or, or because...
Only when there's kids in the building.
When there's kids in the building.
That's, 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 that's real.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, you can speak up soon.
Extracurricular, uh, so after, after normal school hours, uh, there are other people that have the building available. So I'd be okay with that, but it's during the normal school day. We have a, a job to make sure that we're ensuring the safety of all students, uh, that are under our care for that period of time, for the time they get to school and the time that school ends. So that would be...
So you'd be acceptable if it was after-school, regular school hours?
Yeah, if I could see the full plan, yeah. It's right now, I just have way too many questions. So, yeah, yeah, but I, I would be open to considering something like that, an option like that. It's just me. I'm just one person.
One other question. Any other questions now that we...
What about weekends? You were saying that sometimes might be weekends. How would that relate to us having to have staff on for cleaning and things of that nature for that particular area? Are you cleaning your own? Will you have a contract with the school district that spells out everything? Those are the things that...
I would anticipate we would handle our own cleaning, removal of the cardboard. You know, when we pack out those bags, there's cardboard that, too much cardboard. But we would handle removing that cardboard and keeping that space clean. Um, because we, we have, as a food pantry, have some food safety issues that we need to follow as well. So I wouldn't envision that your staff would need to, would need to do that in that space.
What is, Dan, what is the policy for use of the facilities for outside organizations? Is there a criteria?
Go ahead, Liz.
K, it's K F, I have it, I have it up. It's K F.
So what I'm going to say about that is this is an organization that is supporting our students. So where I understand the need for safety, we're talking about feeding our children here, guys. This, these guys volunteer to put together food so our kids can eat over the weekend. So we're not talking about a company that wants to come in and use our space to do something where they could make money or profit or anything like that. We're talking about someone that wants to help serve our kids in our community. So in terms of a facility's schedule or fee, I would say that we would not have any kind of fee because they're doing the work for our kids. Um, and typically, that's the lens we use when we look at people using our space, uh, you know, so...
It wasn't, that question wasn't driven to the fee. I was not going that route.
Good.
I just want, because I, I don't think there should be a fee either. I just want to make sure that the criteria that you can weigh from the policy, so if some, another organization comes in to do similar, but not the same type of thing, that we're treating them all equally.
Yes. I understand that part, Deb.
I would say that we are, it's the D R D's, it's small space and there's no charge for that either.
And I, and I would agree...
And I, and I would agree with that as well because they're specifically serving our kids and we've approved that service to them. This is an ongoing program, this isn't something new that you're, that you're approving, this is just something that we've done for a long time.
Would it be difficult to, to be able to, to do the after-hours, sorry, I'm quiet. Would it, would it be, uh, acceptable for your team to be able to do after-school hours?
Um, I, we have to, if that's, if that's the criteria that makes it a go or a not-go, I, I think we can work that out.
We'll, we'll work it out, absolutely.
Um, it, we really are struggling where we are. Um, I, I, for any of you who haven't been in there, it, it's, 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 it's full, right? And it's getting fuller, and the need is, is growing, we keep thinking it'll settle down, but it's, it's, it's growing. So to, to get that program out of that space. The team that does the packing is a team of four retired women like myself. Um, the driver is a retired gentleman, I'm trying to think of Mike, is he still working part-time at, at? Yeah, he's still part-time. Um, but again, it, it's, we can work, if, if the concern is being in there during the actual school hours, I think we can work around that, it, it's that critical at this point. We have been looking at some other facilities that would have significant rental fees, and it just, with the growing need for inventory and things like that, to think about paying additional rent somewhere else, um, on top of what we're paying now is, is, is not good, so. So I think if, if it's not, Jack, does that answer questions, if it's not during school hours?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the largest concern I have. Uh, I mean, there's other concerns, um, that are, that are minimal in nature. Um, obviously, with, I'm sure that you would adhere to all food guidelines, uh, all of those things. Uh, sometimes with food, it also brings in pests, so I don't know if we would also, how you store your food within that room, uh, because that has also been an issue that I've seen, um, in, in, in my administration of, of buildings. So, I don't know if that's a factor that's been taken into consideration. Um, but if we can make it work and be able to, um, ensure the safety of the kids while under, in our care, um, then, uh, it would be okay.
Liz, do you have a question?
Um, not a question, but I, I have gone through the policy, um, just to, to Deb and, um, and Laura's points to make sure that we are treating the organizations that come and, and ask this equitably. This group does, is, there are no conflicts that I'm seeing with the policy, um, that other groups have run into before, based on just the nature of the, um, of the organization. Um, so looking through the policy, I'm not seeing anything that, that would, um, prevent this going through.
Thank you, thank you, Liz.
Thanks, Liz. How long does it normally take you? I know, 'cause you guys do a tremendous service for the children. I know from the middle school, I mean, all the bags you put out on the weekend go extremely fast for those kids going home, they have some kind of, uh, food security and that's something that, you know, we've been trying to get for many, many years, food security for, for children, okay? What is the normal timeframe that it takes you to fill up these bags to bring to the schools?
Uh, it's, it's about a two-hour packing time. Um, it, it, the other, the other in and out is, is inventory delivery. Most of, when we first started this program back in two thousand eighteen, we were also getting a lot of product through the New Hampshire Food Bank at no cost. Um, the items that, that we would like to get from the, because it's individual servings now.
Correct.
It's, you know, it's a little thing of cereal, not a, not a... They're intended to replace the breakfast and the lunches that kiddos are getting during the school,
Correct.
during the school week. Um, at this point in time, most of our inventory is either coming from Performance Food Service, which also serves, serves your district. Um, I get cereal and fruit cups and shelf-stable milk through them. Everything else is coming from Sam's Club or BJ's. Um, and it, it, the turnover is, is pretty quick. At the pantry now, we're storing things on rolling metal shelving units, um, which we would move into that facility, so it's all up off the ground and, and it moves through pretty fast. Nothing stays, nothing stays there. We, we shop as we need, as we need, with the exception of the, the items from Performance Food Service. And in order to get free delivery, I need to do at least a thousand dollars in twenty cases per an order. The thousand dollars is, is the harder to get to than the twenty cases.
Being at the middle school, obviously, it'd be a little bit easier when you're filling in and leaving them for the middle school and you still transport the packages for the high school or, is it high school yet?
Elementary.
Elementary, Paul Smith, so you'd still transfer them over to Paul Smith?
Yes, yes, most, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
How many families through the school do you think you serve through this particular part of the food pantry?
Right now, we're packing, we, we were packing about a hundred, we were packing about a hundred and thirty bags a week, and there were some issues at the middle school with finding partially picked-through bags on the buses and in the woods and things like that, so Oriana cut it back at the middle school. Right now, I, I think this past week, the last ones are going out this week, there were seventy-five bags because they cut down. Um, we also have been taking bags out to Hanover, um, is the other, the other place that's involved. There, the need is greater than that, and, and we would like to see the program grow. I wish we could do something different about the middle school. That seems to be where the stigma and things are having the most difficulty. That the kids just don't wanna be, they don't wanna take them, so it's, we're still working through that with the guidance counselor and, and other folks.
Any other questions?
So, the only other thing I would mention is that, um, should this come to fruition, that we come up with an MOU so both organizations has an understanding of what the responsibilities of each organization is?
So I'm gonna make a motion that we allow the, uh, Twin Rivers Food, uh, Pantry to take, uh, to allow space, use space at our Franklin Middle School, uh, for a food pantry space in room sixty-three.
Room sixty-three.
In room sixty-three.
And allow the superintendent to create an MOU.
And allow the superintendent to create and, uh, execute an MOA with Twin Rivers Pantry. Second by Lori, any further discussion?
Within that MOU, would it restrict the accessibility of the building?
That's good, that would be at the discretion of the superintendent to work that, so I don't, how do you wanna work that, Dan? That's gonna be up to you, I mean, you're the, you're the superintendent in the school district.
So I'll work with... Get put together and come back to your next meeting?
I'll, I'll work with Daisy on that, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Motion passes and the space will be allowed for, uh, Twin Rivers to have a food pantry space at the Franklin Middle School. Okay. You're welcome. Daisy will connect.
We will, thank you very much.
All right, good to go.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, guys. Next up, I'd like to nominate Spirit Seeker, uh, as the treasurer for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Make a motion to accept the nomination?
Second. I'd like to make an amendment to that motion.
Hold on a second, so motion's been made, then we're seconded, now you wanna make an amendment to the motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion to include a stipend of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars annually for the service.
So we do the motion on the amendment first, so the amendment is to give a salary of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Seconded by Delaney, any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment?
The money comes from?
The money is going to come from the school board salaries that were given back, uh, earlier in the year. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a, a roll call vote on the, on the amendment.
Um, Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
So the amendment, uh, passes, so now we'll take, uh, a vote or any discussion on the original motion as amended. All right, seeing none, if I could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Uh, Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Tim Dow? Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
That motion passes and the nomination is accepted for Spirit Seeker to be the school board treasurer with a salary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Fantastic, thank you, everybody. I have two resignations tonight for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I asked the board to accept the resignation of Ainsley Doyle, guidance counselor at Franklin Middle School, and Jane Gizzi, special education teacher at the elementary school.
Move to accept with regret.
Motion, Jack's made the motion to accept the resignation with regret, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Motion passes and resignations are accepted with regret. Each year at this time, we have to fill out the MS twenty-six C for the Department of Revenue and Administration. The board has to sign this form, which basically submits our budget that went to the city council. So I'm gonna pass this form around for Jefferson, uh, and if everybody could sign it. With the exception of you, Liz, you're not gonna be able to, so you, when you, when you're feeling better, if you could come down and see Jefferson to sign it.
Someday it'll magically make it so you can sign it.
I can do that.
Someday it'll be, someday it'll be electronic, I'm sure, but I'm gonna pass this around for everybody to sign, you wanna start, Tim?
But like, in the moment.
So this is something we do at the June meeting every year, so. So we'll pass that around. While that's going around, I'll move to the next item. So we have, uh, a three-year audit engagement letter from Jim Roburge. Uh, they've been doing our audits for as long as I've been here and longer than that, actually. And, uh, we're hoping that you will approve us engaging with them for three more years. When I first came here, we were five years behind in audits, and, uh, it took quite a while for Amanda to get caught up, um, before Jefferson stepped in there and finished that piece up. And everything has been going swimmingly since. So from our perspective, uh, he's, he's given us, uh, a good rate, he has not increased his rate, if you look at the letter in the folder, uh, it's consistent, so, uh, we're hoping you'll approve us signing off for three more years. So move, motion's been made to accept a three-year audit agreement, uh, with our current auditor, auditing company, so move by Jack, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne, is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Deb Brown?
No.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth? Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Motion passes, three-year, uh, audit agreement with our current audit is, is, is passed. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next up is the safe grant vendor approval. So in your pa- in your packet, Jefferson was working with two companies. Let me just find them. They're somewhere.
Oh, they're at the end of yours, at the end of the packet. It's, I, yeah, it's in.
I'm not seeing them.
Meridian and A three?
Meridian and A three are the two companies, I don't have them in front of me, but I can still speak to them. So A, A three is the suggested vendor that we ask you to go with. Meridians was, uh, above budget and above what's allowed in terms of how much money we have to spend from the grant. You may recall, we have a hundred thousand dollars to spend both at the middle school and at the high school to fix the exterior doors. So when we talked about this at finance, we talked about the fact that A and, A and E, uh, was the vendor of choice based on their proposal. Uh, in fact, there was some money that was gonna be left over that we were gonna speak to them about and actually fixing s- a couple other doors, uh, if we had the money to do that, so. We're trying to get this scheduled, so we're hoping the board will approve this tonight. As this is summer work that has to happen this summer, in the next... Ten weeks. No, what is the company you wanna go with again? I don't have it in front of me. A three? A three, sorry, I said A, A and E, it's A three. Okay, A three, okay. All right, so everybody should've had that in their drive, uh, that board drive. Does anybody have any questions on the safety grant vendor that Jefferson is recommending? All right, so if we don't, if we wanted to make a motion on accepting it, I'll take that motion now.
Make a motion to approve, um, the company A three communications, uh, for the ninety-two thousand fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, uh, for the middle school and for seventy-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and eight cents for the high school.
Second.
Motion been made by Jack, seconded by Deb, is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I need a roll call vote.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Delaney Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Katz?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Liz, Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yeah.
Motion passes and the vendor is, is approved. Thank you. Okay, next up is the bus transportation contract. We've been going back and forth to the bus transportation contract for about the last five months. Uh, we've been talking with finance about this all along. Last time we met with them, we asked them to give us a proposal cutting one bus for next year because of our, uh, enrollment drop for the last three or four years. That proposal came forward, that's the proposal that was in the board drive for you to review. I am recommending to you that you cut a bus and go with that proposal, which would reduce the amount of the contract by sixty-five thousand dollars and put us twenty thousand dollars, approximately twenty thousand dollars, under what we budgeted heading into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They did give us bus routes, projected bus routes, the buses were projected to be about an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes, depending on, obviously, where students live and how they design the routes. I don't believe that we should keep an extra bus on hand to reduce the bus ra- routes by ten minutes. Uh, I think that they will shake out better than what they provided to us as well. So, like I said, from a fiscal standpoint, uh, because of the number of students that we have at this point, I think it's time to go down to four buses during the day, uh, for the bus routes. In fact, we haven't had the fifth bus probably for the last three, three and a half weeks because of a driver shortage.
Two a month.
Uh, yeah, so they've been using only four buses at the end of the day, uh, already, and we've had zero complaints about the length of the, uh, routes or any of that, so. I think now is the time for us to make this move, so.
Yeah.
But we can answer any questions you have. If there may have any questions, go ahead, Jack.
Uh, I couldn't find the vote in there, I only saw it under report. So I, I looked in the drive, I looked in the board packet, uh, I think I missed it. I don't know what it was titled, what it was under.
The spreadsheet?
It was a couple, uh, I was gonna say a...
It was a couple, I was gonna say it was a couple weeks ago, I mean.
Liz, did you have something?
I was just saying, I, is it in the finance reports folder, 'cause I'm not seeing it either. I, I, I couldn't find it either, and I'm not seeing it now.
It is in the finance folder, so if you wanna go into the finance folder, look at it. It didn't.
So, if you wanna talk on it, then, oh, you have it, right?
Yeah, I have it too.
Okay, all right, if you wanna talk on it, just to give an idea of where we are on that.
So basically, the proposal, original proposal was for seventeen percent increase in year one, seven percent in year two, and seven percent in year three. That's when we started having, you know, digging into the negotiation, because that was a big increase and we weren't happy with that large increase. With the cutting of one bus, the increase goes only to four point eight percent. And it actually comes in lower than where we would've been. So I, I have the spreadsheet here, if you wanna go in the finance committee folder, you can find it. Ultimately, what happens is it saves us sixty-five thousand dollars from the original quote. I don't have the grand totals in front of me.
Some of the things that can also change in this is that we had discussions about the athletics part of it, okay? And, and one of the things is, is to, and we can talk about this further, make motions about, one of the things is to have the superintendent in the business administrator start looking at either leasing or purchasing some more twelve-passenger, twelve, fourteen-passenger vans, or some smaller school buses, electric school buses that have some grant money out there through Washington for it, okay? Over the last two years, on average, we've been averaging spending between twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars per school year for transportation for athletics. If we were to get another van, which would give us two twelve to fourteen-passenger vans, we also have the trailer that we can transport football equipment in, we wouldn't need to do the busing, okay? Which would save the district about thirty thousand dollars in the contract, so. Those are some of the, those are some of the things we talked about that would be cost efficient, looking into also the electric buses. The problem you run into is first student is the only one around here. We, we've looked outside, we've gone outside, we've done everything possible, but they are the only one. And, and we're getting one of the lower hikes, there are some schools that are getting twenty-plus percent increases. So there are some ways of doing some more savings on top of the sixty-five thousand by eliminating a bus. There are some other ways that we could possibly look at saving some money, and that would be by getting another van, okay? We've, we've shown that the van that we purchased has paid, has been paying for itself throughout the school year by taking kids to different functions and getting kids out in the community, okay? That's something that we can talk and make a motion on later, but that is one of the savings on the buses too. Okay, so everybody should have the bus, the contract in the bus, in the school folder now, if you can't find it in the finance.
Can you confirm, is it six to five or five to four? Because the paper says six to five, but it, and I heard you mention four buses.
It's six to five because you have to count the vocational bus, but it, but in terms of the runs, it's four runs in the morning to pick the kids up and four runs in the afternoon to take them home. The fifth bus is that vocational bus. Does that help?
Thanks.
What did we project for our budget for blessing next year?
I don't have the grand total in front of me, but this puts us twenty thousand below what we projected.
So, we have adequate funding in our line, starts to cover the first year contract.
Yes, yes. If, if we go with the reduced bus, if we want, if we kept it as is, we'd be over budget by forty-four thousand dollars per se.
But the numbers don't reflect it, Jack, with continuing to have that bus, because the numbers, we're only showing sometimes anywhere from twelve to twenty-two kids riding the bus, you know, and, and the numbers aren't there to support.
It's time to cut a bus.
And the fact, the fact is also the we've been going over a month now where the bus has not been going in the afternoons to pick up the kids, because they don't have the driver to do it, so. We, we've already shown that we can, we can support this with four buses in the district and then the fifth one for vocational schooling.
Make a motion to approve the transportation contract from twenty-four through twenty-twenty-seven.
Motion been made by Jack to accept the three-year bus transportation contract, seconded by Leanne, any further discussion? Go ahead, Marie.
What, what, I know that there's been a lot of chatter about the buses just not showing up and parents not knowing that the kids aren't being picked up, and I'm just wondering, what is that all about?
It's a matter of, I mean, parents, if they have changed their phone number, changed their email and stuff, they need to notify the school. Because the schools go by what the enrollment, what information they get at the beginning of the school year. And I know that notices are sent out immediately to, to parents and with a, with a child, but it's the parent's responsibility to update the school so that the schools have current information.
No, I have no doubt that there, there's efforts to reach them, I'm just wondering why is there an issue to begin with? Why are buses, is it, is it a staffing issue?
It is. Nope, it's a staffing issue.
Staffing issue.
I have no doubt that messages are being sent out, they're just not being received.
Yeah, they, they just can't find the drivers, so.
We should be okay this week though, 'cause we're like one of the only schools still open.
Yeah.
Especially by this Friday, so.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Deb Brown.
Yes.
Delaney Carrier.
Yes.
Lori Cass.
Yes.
Ms. Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Tim Dow.
Yes.
Leanne Feiffield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes, the bus contract passes.
All right, thank you guys. All right, next up is a memorandum of agreement with the Franklin Education Association. So this is an agreement we put in place a couple of years ago because of the teacher shortage primarily at the high school. And this allows for teachers that opt to, to teach an extra class during their planning period, and they receive a stipend, depending on if it's a half-year course or a full-year course. The agreement is exactly the same as last year's agreement. So we currently are short a math teacher and will do everything we can to try and hire a math teacher. However, it would be nice to have this in place so that if we had people willing to take on extra classes, we would be able to allow them to do that and pay them accordingly as well. So that's the purpose of the MOA. It has already been approved by the Teachers Association.
Make a motion to approve the MOA with the Franklin Education Association as presented.
Second.
Motion been made by Jack to accept the memorandum of agreement with the Franklin Education Association as presented, seconded by Deb, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote.
Deb Brown.
Yes.
Delaney Carrier.
Yes.
Lori Cass.
Yes.
Ms. Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth. Tim Dow.
Yes.
Leanne Feiffield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes and the memorandum, memorandum of agreement is accepted.
Okay, excellent. All right, next up, fam, family school attendance liaison position. I've been talking to this in different committees for about the last six months. Truancy continues to be an issue, an area of concern for our district. The lack of having a resource officer at our disposal really hurts us in our, in regard to trying to address truancy concerns. So we have secured funding through our CSI grants at the elementary and middle school, and we're gonna use some bar money at the high school to fund a part-time family school attendance liaison position. It would be a hundred eighty-five day position, thirty hours a week. To really go after this truancy issue, the job description is in the board folder for your review. It's pretty multi-layered as to what this person would be doing to help us, you know, really go after this issue, trying to raise our attendance rates. It, it's hard to improve educational outcomes when kids aren't in the classrooms or in school. And there's different reasons at the different schools, in the elementary school, it becomes more of a parent issue, family type situations that we need this person to intervene on. Middle school and high school is sometimes is more of student behavior type issues that we need this person to help work on with us. It cuts across school safety and, and all of our I two data improvement as well, I talked about it in both different committees as well. We still are going after funding in one of Barbara Slaton's grants as well, so if Barbara's grant is successful, then we'll just shift the money and use the CSI money and bar money in a different way, but because we have it secured, I'm ready to move on it, but need board approval to do that, so.
Do you, you spoke to DOE on the CSI money for this being accepted?
Yeah, they're the ones who named it for us, actually.
Okay.
When we, when we sat down with the DOE, they said, you have that in your plan, so they said, but why don't you just call it this and it's, it'll, it'll be approved with your plan. That was specific to the elementary school, and we're gonna model it the same way in the middle school, so we can split the funding, 'cause obviously we want this person to be at both schools. And then at the high school, we talked with Cora Turner, we're gonna, the other third will come from the bar piece at this point until we see if Barbara Slaton's grant is accepted. We'll know more about that in September, but I'm ready to move on it now, so we don't have to wait till the school year already starts to, to move on it, so.
Make a motion to approve the family school attendance liaison.
Motion been made by Jack to approve the family school attendance liaison position, do I have a second? Second by Delaney. Any, any further discussion, Jack?
Is this for a period of one year?
Well, every position we have is for a period of one year until we reevaluate to see if it's worthy of coming back or not, like based on the budget process. But in my head, it's a position that we're gonna have, hopefully see a great impact, and then build it into budget, whether that's through the regular budget, whether it's through a grant. But in a perfect world, we'll see a tremendous improvement, and we'll say, we gotta have this position and keep it for as long as we can keep it. And then it would be worth putting in the budget and figuring it out, so that's how I'm proceeding with it. The funding right now is one-year funding, but we're used to that around here, so.
Yeah, that was my concern, that it's the, it's the funding issue and becoming part of the general operation budget.
Yeah, and that's what we have to figure out, so you know, next, next March, when we're all sitting down to do budget again and talking about what stays and what goes, we have to evaluate everything, and that's be something that we evaluate for sure. But hopefully we'll evaluate it positively, 'cause it made, made an impact, that's what I'm hoping for. Yeah, it's, it's benefited, yep, yeah, because of the thirty hours, it'll be benefited, thirty hours a week. You know, and we'll see what we get for a candidate pool, because it's only thirty hours, you, you'll wonder, but better to have that than, than nothing, so we'll, we'll see what comes in.
But they were talking, Je, I mean, Jefferson was also talking just a single plan, right?
Yeah, we probably modeled it after pair of professional contracts, so we pay a hundred percent of a single, and then the person wants to apply it to something else, they pay the difference. You know, so I, I think the total cost, we were thinking about somewhere between around twenty-eight dollars an hour for someone of, of this nature, and then with the benefit that we talked about, it was about forty-one thousand, including benefits, would be the total cost for the whole position to come out of the grants and stuff.
He answered part, one of my questions was the sal, range, salary range.
Yeah.
Second would be that this is not part of ACBA, it's gonna be.
It's a non, yeah, non, yeah, a non-union position, yep, yep. We're kinda modeling after Earl Cook, who, who was with us before he passed away, but his, he was in the same kind of a role with us a few years back, if you, those of you who remember Earl.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda modeled after that.
Any other discussion?
I just have a quick.
Yep, go ahead, Liz.
And it's very small, but I'd like to make a recommendation on the job posting language, bullet point six. I would just like to see that language begin a little bit more inclusive. Right now it says collaborates with school staff to develop intervention plans. I would maybe just recommend saying like, school and district staff or school staff and administration, just open it up so that this, like, to make it very clear that this person can collaborate with a number of parties across the district for those specific plans.
Writing it down right now, Liz. Love it.
Thank you.
We'll add it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we need a roll call vote.
Deb Brown.
Yes.
Delaney Carrier.
Yes.
Lori Cass.
Yes.
Ms. Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Tim Dow.
Yes.
Leanne Feiffield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes and the family school attendance liaison position is passed.
Excellent. I will get that posted, thank you everybody. Okay, next up, kindergarten start of the school year. And I don't see it in my packet, Colleen, I don't know if you have it in your packet. You have the copy, Deb, there. So I met with Jay Lewis and the kindergarten team, and they were looking to do a little different start to the school year with kindergarten, that's some of the challenges they had the first week of school. And they put the proposal together for me to share with the school board, and I, I do support their proposal. What they wanna do is they wanna have a staggered start of the school year, the first, that first four days of school for kindergarten. And basically what they wanna do is have half the kids come in for two days, and the other half to come in for two days, so that they can do a good job of kind of getting them settled and organized, and then have them all come together that second week as a full class. We did run into some challenges, I'll call them, that first few days of school, especially with the five-year-olds. And they're hoping that doing this kind of approach will eliminate some of the challenges that they face this year. It's not unusual to do something different like this with the kindergarten kids coming in. The key is to make sure that you communicated to families well in advance, so they're aware of, you know, when their kids are gonna have the, the school open for them and when they're not, so they can deal with the types of childcare needs and all those things that they need to do. But they have the full description in there for you, for you to take a look at. But I would ask you to approve the kindergarten staggered start, so that I'm able then to communicate that out over the summer as we bring kids in, so that families know how that first week of school will go for our kindergarten students.
Motion been made by Delaney to accept the staggered start of our kindergarten as, as presented by the superintendent, do I have a second? Second by Marie. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Laurie first.
Pointing to you. Let me know that you had a question.
This is, the kindergartners, do they come five days a week?
Oh, full-time, yeah.
Full-time.
All day, yeah.
Has there been any thought to having two days and, I mean, four days with the center day being a collaboration day for the teachers, like a Wednesday? So that they would have, be able to, all the teachers be able to work together for planning time, common planning time and stuff like that?
So the kids would need some one Wednesdays?
Right, that have one day off, I mean, I'm thinking Wednesday, but.
So as a parent, that would be difficult.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just saying like, hey, I need daycare for one day.
Yeah.
But that's just, just my, I mean, I'm not always to give the teachers some time to do something.
'Cause I know sometimes it's difficult for them.
Well, they have common planning time, so we, we do do a good job of giving them time together. And I would concur with Laurie that I, I think that, that it would be very difficult for families if we went to try and do something like that. We, we remove the half-days once a month, if you remember going back quite a little ways. Um, we, we remove the half-days once a month, if you remember going back quite a little ways.
Yeah.
Because it was so problematic for families, um, cause we were trying to do professional development with teachers and a lot of districts do that. But in our district, we, we got crucified because people just could not find the daycare that they needed. And we ended up take, and we ended up not doing it anymore, so. But I am happy to tell you that, that they do have the common planning time and they work very well together, which is great, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Jack?
In the proposal, it stated that, um, half of the, of the kindergarten class doesn't pre-register. Is that accurate? So we get a lot of late registry?
We get a lot of last-minute registrations, yeah. I, I actually had to tell a new teacher who was gonna be in one position that she had to be a kindergarten teacher, because we had so many kids one year that came in. That, you know, despite the fact that we communicated out as many ways as we can, we sometimes get last-minute flood of kids that come in. Yeah.
So I know that we do a, um, kindergarten screening, um, before the end of the year, correct?
Yes.
But we don't have a secondary screening, um, before the start of the school year?
We, we have kids that register all summer and we don't worry about screening them at that point, we just have them register at that point. So, thinking down the road, my head is lo- lo- leading toward potentially next year. Well, year after next year, doing a full week, the first week of school of screening and all kinds of stuff with kindergarten. And then starting then and grouping them the following weeks. So this is stepping towards that process, I think. Because what happens is we get luck, we'll be, we'll be lucky if we get twenty-five percent of our kids that we screened when we do it in, in April or May, whenever we do that. So the value of that is very much lessened, because we don't get enough kids to show up. And then we have kids that come through the summer and then last minute, we get, let's say we get ten or fifteen kids that last week before school starts. So it's really, uh, a difficult task to try to figure out what classes they should be in and everything. So taking that first week of school and doing screening-type activities with them and some of the different things that we do. Would be a better way down the road of actually building classes and making things, uh, probably go a little bit smoother.
So is the ideal, um, project or the, the, what we're trying to accomplish is, uh, understanding who they are as a education or as a learner? Um, and then to build our, uh, class assignments from that?
Not yet, we're getting there though, yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, sorry, um, cause it, it sounds like in the proposal, it may not be in there, that they are assigned to a room. So when group A comes in, they're going to their teacher's room?
Yes.
And then that individual teacher, so they're already assigned to that staff member?
For, for this upcoming year.
Okay.
But that, but I think a year out from now, my, my vision is to go one step beyond that, where we do some kind of integrated week.
Mm-hmm.
With everybody. And then we do some kind of mixing and matching at that point, cause I think that we, down the road, can do a better job of having balanced classes, let's say.
That's it. Okay.
So this is a step in that direction, I think.
When do you, when do you advertise that registration's open? Do you have a specific timeframe? Do you advertise in the paper, the websites and?
So we advertise very well when we do it in April.
April, okay.
Right, so we do it. But remember, we have a lot of fam- well, it's, and it's not as bad now, but we have a lot of families in transition, who've coming and going. And we just end up having a lot of families that just at the end of August, that just kinda stroll in with their five-year-old. And it's a little kinda nonchalant, but about getting their kids started, you know, it's just kinda the way that it is, so. But like, I'll, I'll talk to Jay and his secretary Nicole all, all summer and say, can you guys blast this out? Can you blast this out? I'll use Judy, uh, the city manager's email too, and say, can you, Judy, will you blast this out for us? Trying to get as many people, as many kids as we can, as early as we can, so we get an idea of what we're looking at. And, and we still end up getting like a, a, a good, good number of them that last weekend before school starts. It's probably a good thing for us to try, I guess. I mean, Fred would do it for us, for sure, yeah, he'd definitely do it for us.
Oh, yeah.
So we can try that.
You may get a few more, uh, prior to the start of the year, but there's gonna be circumstances that come up where you won't get them. But I know this past year, there was an incident, um, that.
Well, then that's, that's what's driving some of this, I think that, that shook them quite a bit, that incident. Um, and also the fact that their classes were a little bit larger than what they're used to. That was the second piece of it, uh, that caught them off-guard a little bit. So I think this will remedy that, giving them a week to kind of get their feet under and, you know, and the, the other piece is, everybody should have to spend a day in kindergarten. If you wanna be humbled, go spend a day in kindergarten the first week of school. You'll be humbled at what, what they, the challenges that they face, uh, with kids, so.
Any other discussion on this? All right, see, now we need a roll call vote.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Lady Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Leanne Feifiel?
Yes.
Jack Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes and kindergarten start of school September, um, has been approved.
All right, thank you, they'll be thrilled to hear that tomorrow, so. All right, school board August retreat date. Uh, someone who has to be there has to move their daughter into college that day, just found that out. So I would prefer not to miss that. So I'm hoping we could look at some other dates, um, to do our retreat.
I can do the third or the twenty-fourth. If it's a, still a Saturday.
No third.
I was gonna say, the third should be out.
Can't do the third.
I'm not sure I'd do it when it's taken by a stage.
Important, entertaining event happening on that day.
Yeah, I'm outta town on the third too, I mean, I'm out of the country on the third.
Twenty-fourth? I can do the twenty-fourth.
My Fisher Katz game.
That's later on.
Okay.
Eight to twelve.
Fisher Katz will start till five.
It is on here at five o'clock.
What's the twenty-fourth look for, for everybody? Okay, okay, yes. Liz, twenty-fourth is good.
Yeah, the first one.
Dan?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth, okay, let's make it the twenty-fourth at?
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve? Great.
That's actually better, this is not fact.
Huh? That's a Saturday.
No, that's about this meeting.
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Okay, um, in terms of the retreat, um, I can obviously have some kind of breakfast for us. Are we looking for facilitation or are we just looking for, just to be us? Do you want the other administrators here, if they can be here? I'm looking for a little bit of guidance as to what you're looking for, so that I can provide what it is you want. How's that sound?
That sounds great.
Now, how would, I'd feel like to see a facilitator to give us some direction, um, you know, have, like, say, perhaps as a, as a board, just like, I think, so we'll, um, talk about things we don't normally talk about in meetings. And, and trying to, um, identify issues that we have that'll be hard.
I agree, I agree with Delaney that we, um, it should be just the board and have.
Just the board, okay.
Yeah.
You want Jefferson, Jewel, and I am assuming, right?
Yeah, that you're part of the board.
The three of us. You want Jewel and Jefferson too?
If you're, if they're available.
Yeah.
Because if we talk about finance, then we'll.
No, no, I agree, I just wanna make sure I do what you want.
Right.
Sorry, Jewel, trying to get you out of it.
No, it's fine.
Would you like to have a team from the rest of the mission, personally, that you think that you only is in their information, that they want to bring out work that's not?
That's.
But I think that, I think that the superintendent could gather information to bring.
Yeah, they don't have it either.
Right, if, if that's the case.
If that gives them the opportunity to provide any information, then they.
If they wanted to bring anything up, give it to you and.
Okay.
You could move it forward.
Uh, second off that, uh, I would support the facilitator. And if the facilitator has an agenda that would include leadership, and I, I'm gonna defer to what the facilitator suggests. Um, if, if they're there, if not at all, uh, I'm okay with that. If they're there for part of the time, I'm okay with that. If they're there for the whole time, I'm okay with that. Um, but if we have facilitation, I'd like to sort of defer to their expertise as to how we could then make the best of our time together.
And I'm thinking of the timeframe, because it's only gonna be four hours, that, you know, the crush of the discussions, um, maybe could lead to another meeting at a different time. That could include them. But do you have a facilitator that you would have in mind?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Always.
One step ahead.
Healy? Ms. Healy?
I would come back around and say, really for a board retreat?
I, I think it should be just the board and Dan. And I don't think anybody else is necessary. This shouldn't be a space where discussing financial issues other than maybe we need to find ways to get more money, but I don't think Jefferson. We shouldn't have detailed financial questions at, at this meeting. We should be identifying kind of larger issues that we wanna, uh, perhaps attack over the next year.
I don't get it.
That's, this is why. That's this question, so have, keep talking.
Okay.
I agree, I think, I think that having a facilitator will help us to come together as a cohesive board. I mean, not that we don't get along, but just to sort of all get on the same page and understand that, you know, why we're all here. And, um, and then, you know, to identify some of those larger issues that don't necessarily, I mean, maybe later down the road, we, you know, some of those issues we find have a financial component to it. That will have to be addressed, but I think we need to identify those issues first.
This is, we don't really ever have a chance as a board to just have open discussion. We're always on a topic, focus on that one thing in, in a straight line, where this will give us the opportunity to have a more generalized discussion that, um, and, and, you know, learn more about each other's thoughts on the, on the, our overall school system.
Exactly, that's, that's my feeling on it, on the retreat. I mean, I, it's my understanding that that's also a time when we're going to be discussing goals, for upcoming goals for the superintendent or for the, for the school board, for the, I don't, I'm not sure, I understand that part of it, but.
Would end up being both, yeah.
Cause I wouldn't have any goals, so it would be both, yeah.
And his goals are playoff hours anyway.
Correct.
Fine, that works for me.
So you have your direction.
So breakfast, a facilitator, just me, Jewel, you get to sleep then, you're good. You and Jefferson are gonna be okay.
Perfect.
And then I'll still gather some stuff from the admin in case we need it and, uh, we'll go from there. That gives me enough, everybody good?
Yep.
Having that here.
And, yeah, we'll do that here. Yeah, we'll probably do it in, uh.
How about there somewhere in the middle school?
Yeah, I, I don't think that's the best place to do it. I think we should do it here, and we could probably do it in, uh.
Yes, I guess.
Conference room.
Jewel's area over there, yeah. Yeah, that'd be a better area for us to talk. The acoustics are way better, I think.
There's air conditioning.
And there's air conditioning too, yeah, good point. All right, that gives me what I needed. And then the last thing I have is school board meeting dates for next year. We've been going around the block about changing the dates and when we wanna do this, so I wanted to have a discussion about what, what's our plan for school board meetings for next year. And I think in August, and I don't remember if we talked about this enough, but I think we had said that we were gonna move it to the fourth Monday in August?
Yes, the twenty-sixth.
And I, I, I had asked you to do that just because it gives me that extra week, um, with terms of hiring and all the other stuff that we get together for you over the summer. So the twenty-sixth of August is what I have for the board being in August, but, and we, we don't meet in July. But what is everybody thinking about from September to, to, to June? I'm looking at Jack and Deb mostly, cause I know there's conflict, so Jane reached out to me today and said that whatever the board agreed upon would be good for her. But I know, we talked about the, 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 normal has been the third Monday of the month. That's what has been the normal procedure of the school board, but, you know, Deb and, and Jack with their positions of running the submissions and we decided to go to the fourth Monday of the month, which, there's not, we can do any Monday we want. There's no, there's no- nothing in, no policy, we're not governed by the city of when we hold our school board meeting or anything, okay? So that's why we decided it was ma- it made it easier, uh, in Jack and, and Deb's position, so that we can get, make sure that we get, you know, everybody here as much as possible to the, to the board meeting, so. Whatever, whatever this board decides, I mean, that's, I, I'm fine with it, so whatever, whatever works for everybody. You know, we're not, it's never gonna be a hundred percent, I can guarantee you that, okay? It's never gonna happen. Someone's, something along the lines is gonna come up, but if we have at least an agreement that, no, let's have it on the fourth Monday of every month, at least then we can do the calendar hour.
I would agree on the fourth Monday of every month.
Delaney? Marie? Lori? Jack? Leanne? I'm good, Deb?
Yes.
Fourth Monday, okay, let's go to the fourth Monday from now on.
And then on vacation months, February.
We will have to move them the third, the third one.
Is that what we wanna do? Cause I'll get a calendar, it says that right open, and we'll just book a calendar.
We're only talking a few.
There's two of them, Feb- February and April, so. Third Monday, February and April, and everybody knows on the January one is on the Tuesday, because of, uh, Civil Rights Day, Martin Luther King Day. So I'll have Colleen put a, the calendar together for us, so we can get that out there to everybody.
Are we good with having a meeting on the twenty-third of December? Cause that's what it would be.
That's my favorite day.
No, I, no, I would say no, cause it's not a day of school, it's a holiday. It's, I'm sorry, it's not a holiday, it, it's, but it's not a day of school, school's not in session that day. So I would say we'd go back to the ear- the week before that.
The third on that one?
Yeah, so that would be the?
Sixteenth.
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 That would actually be your dinner night, too.
And that's, that's the night we'll all have dinner together too.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's a never day of the year.
Everybody good with those dates? So they'll send them out, uh, Colleen will get those made up and send them out to the board, so everybody has them.
And that is all I have.
All right, any questions for Dan?
Actually, I should tell you one more thing. Uh, due to the impending heat this week, I have changed every day this week to an early release day. And it's actually a little earlier than an early release day, I wanted to get everybody out of here by noon, noon if I could. So starting tomorrow, the elementary school will be dismissed at eleven all week, middle school at twelve, and the high school at twelve fifteen, um, so that we can just have school in the early morning part of the day. I was texting with superintendents all morning long, talking about what everybody's doing. Most of them were out of school by Wednesday, so we were the only ones that were, uh, in the situation still to go to Friday, so that's what I came up with based on all the conversations I had with them, so. And I haven't heard much negative at this point, I don't know if anybody else has, but.
See anything on social media?
So I'd say that, that was received fairly well from people then at this point, so.
And we're in compliance with their hours and?
Yeah, we are, and I'll update the hours, cause I have to fill that stuff out at the end of the year, but yeah, we're in compliance.
So we're all done when, Thursday?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday's our last day. That was already a half day, but.
Any questions for Dan? All right, we'll move on to agenda item ten, which is our policy. Uh, we have first reading, again, remember on first reading, um, this is your opportunity to read them over, take notes, make, make, ask, make your questions up and bring them back for the following month for the second reading, okay? So this is just a motion to accept for first reading policy. So this is just a motion to accept for first reading, policy IJOA, policy AC, ACE, ACF, ADB, GBC, and those two are duocoded. Most of these, I think, are the updates through NHSBA, so those are duly coded, that's why they're, uh, both have the same title. Uh, there is a tri-coded one on the next one, so there's, uh, three different ones, but they're, uh, policies all the same, but they're tri-coded. ADC, GBED, and JICG. And then you have policy JBCDR, RG, IHBA, and IHBAR. So I need motion to accept for first reading. So moved by Delaney. Do I have a second? Second by Lori. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Yeah, you can have discussion, but we're not gonna change anything, cause that's when you read the policy and ask the questions under second reading and approval.
Who's the second?
So if you got, I mean, if you got a question on a certain policy, it's, you need to wait till your second reading and approval.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Lady Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Liam Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
I'm staying.
Motion passes and those, uh, policies are accepted for first reading.
Do you have any discussions?
You, you can have discussion, we're gonna discuss, because you can't change the policy and you can't vote on the policy.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I think that questions that people may have should be asked so that if there are changes, they can be brought back to the policy committee. I think that's the step we've been missing.
Okay.
But that's, that's my take. I mean, I think even if it's a first read, there should be, if someone has a question, they should be able to answer it or ask it.
So that...
So that an answer can be, you know, gotten.
Could we then, could, we can't then make changes for the second read, because any changes we make would have to go for a first read.
You could make changes, you could make changes in recommendations as second read. You can either, you can even change the po-, the whole policy or refer it back for a first read within, within the policy.
But what Liz is saying is if she does get it back, like on the first read, she can't do anything in the second read.
Well, no, she can take it back to her committee and talk about it before the fir-, the second read.
And then it would put it, put it back to the first read?
No, it wouldn't, because it's still in that same process.
Yeah.
Because it has been discussed, it's been discussed under the first read. So our questions need to go back to the policy committee to be brought back for the second reading. And if she, if her committee decides that she's going to need some changes, then she would bring those changes to the second, for the second reading. I think we're losing out, um, um, some time, because if people have questions in the second read, then it's gonna have to go back again and it's not gonna get approved that second reading. So then it makes a third reading. That's just my opinion.
That's my understanding as well.
All right. So is there questions on the policy that need to go back to the policy committee?
I have one statement.
Go ahead.
Of policy AC, uh, under section F. Currently, there lives three names of staff members in the policy.
Should be...
Can I clarify that? At the meeting, I was asked who those people currently are, so I mentioned those names. So I think there might have been a mistake. I'm not sure why they were put into the policy. I think that was just a mistake. They shouldn't actually be put into the policy. We were just talking about who they currently are, and I think they mistakenly got put into the policy.
I should've just put the type.
Correct.
So those names need to come in.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd have to update the policy every time position changed.
We'll take those names out of there. You got that, Liz? We're gonna take the names out on that.
Perfect. That's an awesome catch. Thanks, Jack.
Mm-hmm. Do we have discussions on any of those policies? All right. All right, we're gonna move on to the second reading and approval, uh, policy JH, which is attendance, absentees, and truancy, and policies JICD, student discipline, and due process expulsion. So I need a motion for second reading and approval. So moved by Lori. Do I have a second? Second by Delaney. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I need a roll call vote.
Deb Brown?
Yes.
Lady Carrier?
Yes.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Lori Danforth?
Yes.
Tim Dow?
Yes.
Liam Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Motion passes, those two policies are accepted. All right. Agenda item 11, late items. Is there any late items to be brought forward?
Nope.
All right, we'll close that.
I do have a question. There was something in the board packet from Tides. Did, it's a grant, did we accept that grant?
You guys accepted it last...
We did.